The September 2, 2025 Legislative Session of the Anorondle County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. Ms. Fiedler will now lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith while I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Dear Lord, as we gather here for this public meeting kicking off 11 months of important deliberations, we ask that you fill our hearts with restful trust in you. May we be kind to one another by being clear. May we be patient with one another by listening well. And may you help us navigate the ups and downs of disagreement as we aim to encourage and challenge one another in our representation of county residents. In your name, amen. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received 58 pieces which were shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. And just a reminder again that this is the time to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So if you are speaking on a bill that's there for tonight, please wait until that bill comes up on the agenda. Number one, Angela Carpita, Charles Christ, Jigna Patel, and Kyle Nimhard. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. And remarks again are limited to two minutes. Ms. Patel.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Jigna Patel. I live in the Sun Valley neighborhood of Glen Burnie. Today, I want to, so I want to start with little, when we're in school, we learn about logical fallacies. And one of the logical fallacies we learn about in school is red herring. And what is a red herring? It occurs when someone introduces irrelevant information to divert attention away from an argument. And this was the first thing I thought of when I saw the 332-page traffic impact study that the developer of the Nixon property submitted to the county. And in that 332 pages, they talk about all kinds of things, like how the traffic at the intersection of Solide Road and Nabs Creek, which is two miles away from the Nixon property, will be affected, or how the traffic on Marleneck and Tanyard, which is three miles away from the Nixon property, would be affected. But in my neighborhood, we have Marbrook Road. Marbrook Road is one of the main roads that people use to access this property. And do you know how many times they talked about Marbrook Road in the 332-page traffic impact study? Zero times. They did not in any way address the point of the study. How is it going to impact traffic in our actual neighborhood? And I had to say, this is a red herring. 332 pages of distraction away from what's obvious. And I uploaded a photo in my, in general testimony, and it's one picture that's just from one of the streets in my neighborhood. Nobody's having a party, nobody has guests, it's just what the roads in my neighborhood look like. And I'm saying all of this because we need to modify workforce housing in a way that it doesn't, that you have adequate road access. And the developer is distracting you. Workforce housing is good in its place, but when you have a developer that's submitting 332 pages and not addressing the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Thank you.
Mr. Nimhard.
Thank you. Good evening, County Council, oh, Kyle Nemhard, 7809, November 1 Court. Good evening, Madam Chair, County Council. Hope everyone had a great holiday weekend with friends and family. I'm sure you all read Bill 7225 with your friends and family over and over with great excitement and amusement. But seriously, I am here to talk about 7225 and ordinance concerning requirements for conditional uses workforce housing. I want to start by saying workforce housing, the Workforce Housing Act works. It works because it has provisions for transparency between the local residents and the developer. The degree of transparency can be debated, but we're all here now. And we had one meeting hosted by the developer, and mind you, it was the Monday before Thanksgiving, but we still had over 100 concerned residents turn out to this meeting. As I've noted in previous testimony, the developer made it clear to us that he had no intention of engaging with the community any more than what the Workforce Housing Act required. But even then, I'll still say the Workforce Housing Act worked. It agitated the local community into understanding the act further. It agitated the community into understanding how it can be improved upon. It agitated the community in coming to the county council, and it worked because we are now here discussing Bill 7225. The county council has the opportunity to see this through by passing this amendment to the Workforce Housing Act. Doing so will demonstrate how the Workforce Housing Act does not treat the public process as a mere formality. It will also be a gesture to your constituents that the county government is deliberate in its approach to smart growth, recognizing the link between land use and transportation, and ensuring that growth in the county is sustainable. This amendment is far from a hatchet job to the Workforce Housing Act. It's the finest of scalpels that tweaks the bill and protects it against those who seek to exploit it. Failure to pass this bill will reaffirm the cynical view that the Workforce Housing Act is nothing more than a tool that steamrolls the planning and zoning process. I and my neighbors have faith that the county council will recognize that this bill maintains the integrity of the Workforce Housing Act and will pass Bill 7225. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Can I steal this from you? Thanks. Hi, my name's Hugh Seabrook, 426 Crane's Roost Court, Annapolis, 21409. And I hope I'm doing this according to protocol. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I want to briefly talk about property tax credits and their impact on the county. The county sets its property tax rate each year to collect the full amount allowed under the revenue cap. That means increasing the property tax credit does not reduce county revenue. Instead, it shifts the tax burden onto property owners who do not qualify for the credit. A clear example is Bill 91-23, the Public Safety Officer Property Tax Credit, approved unanimously in January of last year. According to the county auditor, this program added about $2 million in cost. In fiscal year 2023, 723 property owners received it with an average credit of about $2,300. Expanded eligibility added roughly 500 more participants, and the cap was raised to $3,500. During the public hearing on that bill, I did not hear any concern expressed about the resulting shift in the tax burden. I am not at all suggesting that Bill 9123 was a mistake, quite the opposite. My point is that if redistribution was considered acceptable then, we should apply the same standard when evaluating amendments to Bill 6525.
Sir?
Yes.
So you can talk about the general thing, but you're talking specifically on the bill now, but if you just want to talk about credits in general?
All right. I was worried again that I was messing up, but I'm just offering that for context for any discussion that might happen in general this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. Two important insights can be drawn from the Anorondle County Affordable Rental Housing Needs Assessment Report that was published in December of 2022. Two important insights that don't really get much attention. First, 60% of the 36,000 households in Anorondle County with household income of less than $50,000 are homeowners as opposed to renters. Second, 43% of the 55,000 units of rental housing stock in Anorondle County are single-family structures. I don't think it's wrong for the county to focus much of its housing affordability efforts on renters living in multifamily structures. However, I think county leaders need to recognize that a significant portion of the neediest populations struggling with housing affordability in Anorondle County are homeowners and those renting in single-family structures. This is why I think the county's property tax policies need comprehensive review and adjustment. To highlight just two, first, the county's supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit, but that's a subject for later tonight. Second, the county's implementation of the Homestead Property Tax Assessment Growth Cap, which sets a ridiculously low cap of 2% per year. This results in shifting significantly higher tax burdens onto the 24,000 units of rental housing stock that consists of single-family structures. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Lisa Aerosmith. I live in Hanover, Maryland, and I'm the Chair of the Public Water Access Committee. I'm here again to talk about Discovery Village. Today, it's been 64 days since the Discovery Village boat ramp was abruptly closed to the public that used it, loved it, and paid for it. There's been no public progress in getting our boat ramp back. No one is saying anything. I have a suggestion. There's $3.1 million in the FY '26 public boat ramp development account. Use that money to buy Discovery Village and get our boat ramp back. And it doesn't have to be just our money as well. I uploaded a series of documents this afternoon, this morning, as general testimony. I believe that facts are a tool, information is a tool, and providing the council with these basic six documents, you know, allows you all to have some of the facts that you need to deal with the situation. And there are other funding sources available if necessary. The Back Country Hunters and Anglers put together a thorough summary of possible public funding sources. The State Waterway Improvement Fund deadline is not until this end of September. The State Program Open Space Fund has some flexibility, you know, work with the state to leverage our own funding and get Discovery Village back. Before it was closed on July 1st, it was de facto general-purpose public boating center. It was used by charter fishermen, recreational boaters, and watermen. Kayaks and stand-up paddleboarders and canoes launched there. People, you know, kids played, you know, had picnics there, and like any place where you can fish, there was always someone fishing off the bulkhead. The lease limited the possible improvements because if you look at the last page of the lease, the map, the lease did not include the buildings. If we get it back, we can then work to use those buildings to make a better public boating center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aerosmith. Yes, sir.
I second that emotion. I'm Mike Shea. I've been in the leadership of South Anorondle Citizens for Responsible Development, and I'm Shadyside, and over 30 years that we've been around, we've saved 1,000 acres on the Shadyside Peninsula from inappropriate development. We've been part of the planning. When the county executive was running for office, he waved this around. Our area had more participation than any other area. We need water access, and we need a community center. No modern community center exists in South County. Hats off to the Department of Aging, they do a great job for the elderly. The next handout that I have for you is our letter to the county executive. Then we have a letter from the state saying you need to give $530,000 back because you closed the boat ramp. You actually walked out on a lease that you had for 30 years that the community, the watermen, were counting on. I had a skipjack in that, in Discovery Village. I had a 100-passenger vessel coastguard inspected at Discovery Village that the county executive had his wedding party on, okay? We're losing all of that because of your lack of your foresight. I hold you accountable. It's your district. You voted against it. You gave up the lease. We could have transitioned into full ownership. We could have owned it at one time for $2.2 million. Now it's $3.4 million. It doesn't matter what it costs. We need it, you need to get it.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. And I just wanted to, just to clarify for people, leases of the county and also purchases are not done by the county council. Any negotiation for those are through the administration, so for those who are interested, I encourage you to advocate with the administration because that's where any movement on that will come from.
My understanding is you walked away from the lease.
Mr. Shea, Mr. Shea, you're done. Thank you. So is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Okay, seeing no movement, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to put on the agenda? There will be a slight change to the printed agenda. We will be taking Bill Number 6625 last this evening. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of July 21st and the closed meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025.
Legislative, let us, excuse me, legislative session minutes of July 21st. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:03 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Hummer, was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. The minutes of the closed session. A closed meeting was held on July 21st, 2025 in accordance with Section 3, 305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland to discuss a personnel matter. Chair Hummer opened the meeting at 8:56 PM and was held in Room 143 of the Orundle Center in Annapolis, Maryland.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of July 21st and the closed meeting minutes for July 21st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of July 21st and the closed meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7625, An Ordinance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks Removal of Snow and Ice. Bill Number 7725, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Pay Plan Positions in the Classified Service Police Department Public Ethics Financial Disclosure.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2225, Resolution Confirming the Adoption of the Anorondle County Hazard Mitigation Plan 2025 Update. Resolution Number 2325, Resolution Approving the Appointment of a Severn River Commission Member. Resolution Number 2425, Resolution Nominating a Member to Serve on the Anorondle County Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6125.
Bill Number 6125, An Ordinance Concerning Epping Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, and Laurie Blair Klossmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. This bill was discussed previously at the 2nd July meeting. Just for your, to refresh your recollection, it is for the Epping Forest Special Community Benefits District for a loan in the amount of $1.5 million with a term of 10 years, amortized over 20 years to be used for renovation and replacement of their community marina. This legislation simply obligates the county to collect the special tax for the special taxing district to repay that loan. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to those that were particularly interested in this piece of legislation for their patients. As I believe I mentioned at our last meeting in July, we received a significant number of documents just hours before the meeting, and in order to do my due diligence, I wanted to have time to review them myself and also have our Office of Law look at them. I have reviewed them, our Office of Law has reviewed them, my colleagues have now seen them, and the conclusion of our attorney is that there, those documents do not provide any reason to prevent us from going forward. So we, I plan on supporting the bill tonight and moving forward tonight.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, as a reminder, there will be, not be a public hearing on Bill Number 6125 this evening. The public hearing closed on July 21st, and the vote was deferred until tonight. There's no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6125.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6125 has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6225 as amended.
Bill Number 6225, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program.
Okay. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Eric Michelson, our Senior Environmental Policy Officer and Deputy Director for the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, Sally Sidlowski, our Storm Water Fee Program Manager, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. So this bill was also discussed previously at the July meeting. It's introduced at the request of the administration on behalf of DPW to make some minor changes to the Watershed Protection Restoration Fee Program to ensure greater consistency and in assessments of the WRPF. I'm happy to go through those changes if you'd like. Other than that, we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No comments? All right. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6225? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6225 as amended.
Bill Number 6225, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6225 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6225 as amended has passed.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6525.
Bill Number 6525, An Ordinance Concerning Finance Taxation and Budget Real Property Taxes Homeowner's Property Tax Credit Program Total Real Property Tax.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, Brian Schenck, our Tax Billing Manager from the Office of Finance, and Laurie Blair Klossmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. This bill was also discussed at the July meeting. It modifies the local supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit program by increasing the threshold for assessed value for which the credit is applicable to 300, from $350,000 to $400,000. I can turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer if he has any additional comments, but I know we have some amendments to discuss, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I think what Mr. Hunt meant is we discussed it at the work session. I don't believe it's been discussed at a public hearing before, so welcome to the public hearing. As I detailed at the work session, and then again, I sent you guys a follow-up email, or a follow-up memo, which was four pages, and I'm sure you read every word, but there are two different knobs to turn to enhance the local supplement to this homeowner's tax credit. It's important to remember that the homeowner's tax credit is a state program, and the local county jurisdictions are able to enhance that and add more credits on top of what's already there. So we have an existing local credit program already. It has not been updated for about 20 years, I think. This bill, as introduced, made a simple update, which was to increase the amount of the assessment value of a home that could be used in the calculation for the credit. After the discussion at the work session and some conversations among the council, in the memo, we proposed that you can also turn the second knob, which is to alter the income tiers that are used to calculate the credit. There's various ways you can do that. As has been mentioned earlier this evening, anything we do for the credit does not affect the overall revenue that the county would intake if the county continues to adhere to the tax revenue cap amount and when it sets its property tax rate, which we have done consistently over a long period of time. So as Mr. Hunt mentioned, there seems to be some discussion over amendments. We're happy to answer any questions, and if you have questions about the specific data or calculations, we have the brains of the operation sitting to my right, Brian from Finance.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion from my colleagues before we go to public hearing? All right. So we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6525. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received 31 pieces which were shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. So we have Kurt Svensson, Camille Weifer, Peter Meyer, Angela Carpita, Timothy Stevens, All right. Mr. Svensson, you can kick us off.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold. In recognition of the other testimony to be given tonight, and the fact that I retired three years ago from a 25-year career in Anorondle County Government, 10 of which as the Assistant Budget Officer, I'm going to focus my testimony on budget-oriented fiscal comparisons of the two amendments you'll be voting on tonight, hopefully. First, the original bill did nothing to address the income tiers, which represent the all-important setting in the sliding scale used in the county supplement. It's essential to adjust those income tiers to correct the fact they've remained frozen in time for 20 years and gutted the program, resulting in a drop of over 50% of the number of homeowners helped. The First Amendment, what I have generously dubbed as a half-measure, merely adjusts the first tier from $12,000 to $16,000. The cost or resulting redistribution of property tax burden is estimated by the administration to be $500,000, which translates to an increase of $190 per year on the average property tax bill. $190. The Second Amendment fully adjusts for inflation all three of the income tiers. The redistribution of property tax burden for this amendment is estimated by the administration to be $2 million, $2 million, which translates to an increase of $7.50 per year on the average property tax bill. Yeah, that's 65 cents per month. That 65 cents per month pales in comparison to the increased benefit to thousands of low-income homeowners throughout Anorondle County. This is economic justice at a bargain price. Please approve the amendment to fully adjust for inflation the income tiers. I've also attached to my testimony a chart that gives you all the detail you might want. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Thank you.
Camille Weifer, Glen Burnie. I'm here to speak on behalf of my mother. As I assist her in getting the financial help she needs, I'm only realizing now just how many hurdles, roadblocks, and flat-out closed doors she is facing as a low-income senior homeowner. And as much as I put it on myself as her adult child to be making the kind of income I and general society expect I'm supposed to at 30, that's not really the issue. My mother should be able to qualify for the kinds of safeguards that make it possible for her to maintain her independence and security as a senior, a senior who's unlikely to climb up to the next taxed tax bracket, but in a blink could drop into poverty and lose everything. I'm hearing all about these new negotiations between the county and land developers who want to build new housing all over the place, revamping request systems, and cutting red tape to make it easier to propose and approve new residential and business projects. What about the rest of our residents? What about the rest of our residents who already pay mortgage? What's being made easier for my mother to keep a roof over her head as a widowed, split-shift worker and monthly housekeeper? This program hasn't been updated in two decades, two decades, and I know this is not the only program so out of date it would require destitution numbers for folks to qualify. This has to change. Today, I asked the council to approve the amendment to fully update the income tiers so that families like mine don't fall through the cracks. We cannot do half-measures.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Angela Carpita from District 6. I am a graduate, a teacher, and a parent of AACPS, and to say that I am deeply invested in the heart of this county would be an understatement. The correct amendment, as introduced by Councilwoman Rodbien, fully updates for inflation and keeps things fair for residents. The amendment makes the program fairer without reducing county revenue. It redistributes taxes more equitably and adds only $7.50, as was already said, to the average property tax bill. Without this amendment, thousands of low-income elderly and struggling homeowners will continue to fall through the cracks, and with it, we restore fairness, we increase overall richness of our communities, we keep heritage, we keep living history, we keep stories, we keep people's legacies. I firmly believe that those who are the longest-standing citizens and members of this community, often already struggling to live in this expensive area or on low or fixed income, deserve to keep their properties. They deserve this from this county. To pull out from under thousands of residents the actual ground that they own because we didn't keep up with a balanced system, let's not do that to them. Generational wealth is at stake. Just that, in and of itself, is the reason to get the amendment right. Isn't homeownership supposed to be financial security? Isn't that part of the big American dream? Our neighbors deserve this amendment and dignity and respect. It's time to adjust the program properly, as introduced by Councilwoman Rodbien. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter Meyer Arnold, and as Rector of St. Margaret's Church, I am proud to be part of a congregation that two of you have ties to. I believe in justice for the poor, and especially the working poor on this Labor Day weekend. Several verses of the Old and New Testaments deal not only with caring for the poor, but speak directly to those who do not help the poor or even oppress them. Proverbs 14, verse 31, says that, quote, "Whoever oppresses the poor shows contempt for their maker; but whoever is kind to the needy honors God." The prophet Zechariah writes that the word of the Lord came and said, "This is what the Lord Almighty said: Administer true justice; show mercy and compassion to one another; do not oppress the widow or the fatherless, the foreigner, or the poor." The first letter of John asks us not to simply love with words or speech, but with actions and in truth. The truth is, there is no decent reason not to fully adjust the income tiers to reflect the last 20 years of inflation. This is the justice issue for the least among us, who are being priced out of their homes due to, due to the lack of property tax relief. This council tonight can decide to help low-income senior homeowners who provide wisdom, stability, and kindness in our community, or the council may decide to turn their faces away from the cries of the needy, our parents, and our grandparents. I believe in justice. I believe that the just decision tonight is a full adjustment to the income tiers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tim Stevens, and I live in Severna Park. As a retired, upper-middle-income resident, I may not be the person you would think of as a witness for the proposed amendment to Bill 6525. The intent of this amendment is to fully adjust for inflation, the income levels, using the criteria for the county's homeowner's property tax credit supplement. I won't personally benefit from it, but it is easy to see it is the right thing to do. Often, you council members face difficult choices between helping certain members of our community and guarding the county's fiscal, health fiscal situation. This is not one of those choices. Updating the income level table simply brings fairness and reality back to a program that hasn't been changed in 20 years. In that time, thousands of families who need this relief have been pushed out, even though they're worse off financially today than homeowners were decades ago. At a time when new, young, or financially strapped residents are struggling to afford and hold on to homes, this program offers them a critical foothold in stability, and the county can do this without losing revenue or harming its budget. By adopting this amendment, you can strengthen community engagement, support better outcomes for our children, improve neighborhoods, and promote intergenerational wealth, all with a small, sensible adjustment. You can be compassionate and fiscally responsible at the same time. I respectfully ask you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bonner.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone back again in their usual places. I'm Linda Hanifin-Bonner, co-chair of the Anarundel Connecting Together Attainable Housing Team, here to provide our comments on this bill. We're aware that this is not the first time this modification has been proposed, and view its resubmital as very positive. And while we don't oppose any type of legislation that gives financial relief to residents, we want to share with you some of the reactions that we have heard from people who have been reading this bill, many of which find it very confusing and don't know how it applies to them. We don't know how it affects descendant property owners in this county, and we don't really have very good data available to people to show where is this program being applied and who's benefiting from it. I think the county, if it's going to pursue this plan, it really needs to conduct a better outreach program with residents to let people know how to become available and qualified for the program. But more importantly, I want to point out to you a disparity in the, in the Maryland State Code that impacts this program. This issue impacts residents who own or are making mortgage payments on housing units while paying their own fair share of state and federal taxes, but they don't own the land on which their units reside. These are Maryland residents who, within mobile home communities within the state of Maryland, 22 of which are within Anarundel County, and each of you has a mobile home community or several within your areas. Residents of these communities are retirees, elderly or on fixed incomes, county and state workers, and a great deal of our immigrant population, whose incomes meet the criteria as well as the housing costs, but these residents can't qualify. We need to make some amendments to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6525? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Janice John. I live at 1101 Neptune Place, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address the council. I live in the Atlanta subdivision in the Broadneck Peninsula area of Annapolis. This is my first time giving testimony, although I've lived in Anorona County for 35 years. I am a member of the Board of the Homeowners Association of Atlantis. Professionally, I am a certified property manager. In addition to my home, I own six rental properties in the county, four townhouse duplexes, and two single-family homes, so I pay quite a lot in property taxes. I have offered all of my current tenants an incentive to purchase their home, and I hope they will be able to do so one day. In the past five years, my property assessments have increased by roughly 20, 30 to 40%. Everything else has increased significantly as well, appliances, HVAC, et cetera. It's very hard for those who make a modest income, or live on a fixed income, or have an unexpected life event, to keep up with these rising costs. It is my belief that we should help our neighbors who may be struggling to stay in their home, and that the threshold for this help should be indexed to keep up with inflation. As a property taxpaying citizen of Anarundel County, I'm happy to contribute 750 per property to my neighbors who qualify for the subsidy. It's not a lot when all of us who can afford it chip in. Therefore, I ask you to vote in favor for a full update of the income tiers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 6525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6525.
Bill Number 6525, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes, Homeowner's Property Tax Credit Program: Total Real Property Tax.
Okay. There are two amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
We can move on to the Second Amendment, so not even introduce the First.
Okay. All right, we will move on to... Madam Secretary, please call, no, I'm sorry, jump ahead. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment modifies the calculation of the local supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit program by fully adjusting for inflation the income tiers specified in Section 42204(c) in the county code, subject to the maximum of $60,000 set forth in State Code 9104j1.
Okay. Ms. Rodbien, this is your amendment.
Thank you. I think that description perfectly describes what it, what it does. I really want to thank Kurt Svenson for staying on our case about this important topic, and I ask for my colleagues' support, and, you know, please ask any questions that you might have. What's that? Oh, and I will make a motion to adopt.
Okay. All right. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Trumbauer, do you know, I, I understand what you're going to say. I think I anticipate it. You're going to talk about this, a balloon, and you squeeze it, and it comes out here, and certain people have to pay more if you do these property tax credits, all that.
For the record, I was not going to use a balloon analogy, but...
Fair enough. I've heard it before. With that, do you have any sense of what the impact of this full adoption would, would be in terms of cost? Have you calculated that? Either budget or finance?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, so let me, let me answer that the best I can, and I'm going to give Brian the right to follow up with more specifics if, if you'd like to.
Please.
First, I'd like to thank the sponsor for sharing with us earlier, so we were able to look at it and agree that the amendment does what, what it was supposed to do. What we, what we can do, what Finance can do, based on the history of the existing credit, and then the universe of ASSTAT data that we have access to, is we can project past trends into the future. Now, I'm saying that very deliberately because I can't guarantee you what the fiscal impact of any of this is going to be, because you have to apply to the program, meet the qualifications, get accepted. There's a lot of dynamic things that can change, but based on past history, Finance has estimated that the original bill would have a fiscal impact, the total credit fiscal impact, including the existing one in law now, is about 1.4 million. And so we believe this amendment that's just been moved to adoption would be about 3.2 million. So that would be a little bit more than, what, 1.6 million dollars above and beyond the fiscal impact that we note in the bill as drafted.
1.8, right.
1.8.
Yeah.
Yes. And so, again, that doesn't affect the county revenue. It's going to be redistributed to the universe of property taxpayers that don't receive the credit.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
And that would, and I know your next question, what does that mean for the tax rate? Again, there's a lot of things that go into that calculation, and if you know Huja Haseem, you know, he does that, and he's got an Excel spreadsheet that boggles the mind, but ballpark, about a million dollars is a basis point on the property tax. So if we're looking at, you know, 1.6, 1.8, 2 million, something like that, we're looking at, it probably would change the tax rate overall by about two basis points, or .02 from what the existing rate is. Now, that doesn't mean that the rate's going to go up in the next budget, because I don't know what that rate's going to be. We do it on the tax cap, and it may, irregardless of this, it may go down, it may go up, but what I'm saying is that this fiscal impact of this amendment, again, projecting out based on past history, would be somewhere in the neighborhood, is it, say, a million and a half to 2 million? And that could have a swing of .02 on the overall property tax rate. Because as you know, the rate is calculated based on the revenue cap, which is the total amount of revenue you can raise, and then we calculate all the credits and all the minutia, and then we set a rate that achieves that amount.
Copy. All right, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to the administration. I know about a week ago, I said I was going to co-sponsor the amendment, I probably got left off, and that's fine, but I do want to thank Mr. Svenson for the in-depth conversation we had previously, because, and as I've said to Mr. Trumbauer, the math is what it is, and the value and the analysis that was done in some of the historical documents that were produced is pretty much spot-on, to be honest with you, and so this, this will help many more people achieve what we all strive for, and that's just fairness, and I think this goes a long, long way in achieving that, and so thank you all for just being able to get this to the table, so, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am appreciative of all the work that's gone in to date on this bill and on this issue, and, you know, we all talk about the, all-of-the-above approach we need to affordability in the county. I would suggest that if this amendment passes, we do bring this bill back to our work session next week to, to talk more in depth for further clarification about all the levers and pulleys that we're adjusting, including some of the testimony we heard tonight about some other issues, to make sure that we're, the bill as amended reaches the population we want to reach without adversely affecting others that are over the, there's always going to be a line of someone who, people who don't qualify, right? So let's figure out if this amendment added on to the original bill pulls and pushes all the right levers in the right direction to serve who we're trying to serve. It's complicated. You can always count on the state to make something complicated. So we're starting with that. We talked earlier, some of us, about the work session next week. It's a good opportunity to revisit the bill and talk about some further scenarios, so you're not off the hook yet.
Madam Chair, if I may make a suggestion. If, if the council is interested in specific scenarios, if you can share those with us in advance, then it's more likely that Brian and I can have those scenarios mapped out for you, so you could say, you know, give us, you know, someone with this amount of income and this, this amount of home assessment. We have the data, just like we did in the memo. We can run whatever examples you want, but we need a little advance notice. So if you can give it to them, give it to us before the work session, that would be very much appreciated.
Noted. Mr. Smith.
I do appreciate the, the Clark Kent, Lex Luthor, and Lois Lane assessments. They were pretty spot-on, and how you broke that down, so Superman fan here, so I appreciate it.
I thought you might like that, Mr. Smith. But in reality, my son had just watched the Superman movie. It was fresh on my mind, and I thought, why not pick three names from that?
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the mention that we can come and come back and talk about this during the work session if this amendment passes, the bill in its amended form. My question, because we have talked a lot about the income tiers, what was the reasoning behind landing on the $400,000 assessment?
In the original bill, you're asking?
Yes.
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, so that was, as I mentioned at the work session, that was a simple way that we could adjust the universe to get more credit towards people that qualified for the credit already, and it was in acknowledgement that home assessment values have risen dramatically, so that was one knob we could turn. It was, as it turns out, the simplest knob we could turn. After the work session, we found out that you guys wanted to turn the complicated knob. That's fine, too, and so we have the amendment before you now. So it just, there's, there's two parts of the calculation. It's the home assessment value up to a maximum, and currently in, in law, this, the local It's the home assessment value up to a maximum, and currently in law, the local supplement is 350,000. The bill before you, in its unamended form, adjusts that up to 400. I believe the amendment builds on that, so you'd have that assessment up to 400, and you'd also adjust the income tiers in the amended bill as it's before you now.
Great.
So 400 wasn't a magic number. It was a movement in acknowledgement that home assessments have risen since, you know, the bill with the credit was first conceived.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And just one other footnote. The state credit, that assessment maximum, is 300,000. So we are already 50 ahead of the state, and going to 400 was just another jump up.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I don't remember which document. I was looking at it a minute ago. Yeah, here it is. It's in what we got from the auditor's office. But I'm looking at Montgomery County. They passed a bill in April to take their cap from 300 to 375. So we're still even be ahead of them in terms of where we are on the state. Is anybody in the state at a 400,000 cap? I was trying to look at that good spreadsheet that you sent, but I didn't. Maybe Calvert at 400 and Harford?
To my... Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I'm not aware of any one document that compiles all of that. So we haven't done the work to look at each of the 24 jurisdictions to find that out.
Somebody did. Somebody said, I didn't make this up.
It wasn't us.
Okay.
Maybe it was Kurt. Ask him.
So there's a document that was provided to us that has the 13 jurisdictions in the state that have implemented additional credits on top. It might have been the auditor's office that did it. Yeah, it's really helpful.
They're nodding. They're very bashful, but it was them.
It's very helpful. This is great. But it seems like we're going to the top of what that level is. And it also seems like in not just adjusting the assessment cap, we're also adjusting the income cap, which then may put us even further ahead than everybody else. So I like... Am I understanding this incorrectly, that we're really at the avant-garde here? We are leading the charge, if you will, with where we're going to land?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. What I'll say, without having that document in front of me, is...
I'm not sending it either.
I believe that we would be the most... I don't want to say... The largest local supplement. I believe that could be true.
Okay.
But it would certainly mean that when the local supplement was first put in place, and now we're adjusting it towards inflation, I don't know that any other county has fully done that.
Okay. And... Do you want to go? Oh, sorry. And just to follow up with that. So I didn't have a problem with your... The administration's bill going to 400, which didn't touch the income piece, it simply touched the cap. I was okay with that. I had an opportunity to look at the amendment from Ms. Pickard, and I probably could have gotten behind that amendment. My biggest concern with this amendment, and I'll just say this publicly, is the additional $1.8 million price tag that you guys are not saying it's going to cost, but that your past performance is the best predictor of future performance, that it's going to end up costing. That's a big number to come in with on this amendment. So I'm just going to put that out there. I didn't have a problem with where we were, but this is a big move.
Ms. Pickard.
You know, and I appreciate that, because obviously I reached out to the administration, and we had a more incremental amendment that was... I was planning to propose. We got the more expansive amendment at the end of last week. But sitting here today, and having a very keen understanding of housing and the housing challenges, we're not building housing. We're not building housing for seniors to downsize into. More and more and more pressure is on folks to be able to stay in the home they currently have for a multitude of reasons. Mortgage rates are high, there's nothing to buy, there's nowhere to downsize into, and people want to stay in their homes. But the bigger issue, a light bulb went off, really, truly. We're not building it. So if we're going to make Anarundel County affordable, we're going to have to... Going to quote the Secretary of Housing and Community Development, we got to do an "all of the above" approach, and this is one. And if our citizens don't want to see more housing built, then they're going to have to pay a little bit more on their taxes to absorb... To allow our seniors to age in place. I mean, we're going to have to do a little bit of it in every angle, in every segment. We got to do something. And we get pushback on the building of housing. We get pushback on the building of affordable housing. We get pushback on it from every angle. And so this is it. This is one of the "all of the above" approaches. And I think... I am not sure that this more expansive amendment is exactly the way we want to see this tax policy, because it is complicated. But if we pass this more expansive, if that's what four or more of us choose to do, we do have an opportunity to talk about it more in detail, really drill down on all those recalibrations that need to happen to hit where we want to hit the mark, and come back with a subsequent amendment if necessary. So that's how I got here. That's how I got here. And after talking with you 10 minutes before the meeting started.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I think I spoke to a number of my colleagues over the course of the day about this amendment. And I just think of this from the perspective of my own life, because that's a very easy perspective to understand. And the state... The income... The high income threshold, the total income threshold, is $60,000. And over the course of my time as a homeowner, I have been on both sides. I have been below $60,000 in household income, and I have been above $60,000 in household income. And I think the times that I have been above $60,000 in household income, I would have been more than willing to contribute an extra 65 cents a month to make sure that people in my community could stay in their homes. And remember, that's the average. So if... And that... So we're saying $7.50 per year for the average household to pay for this amendment, to pay for what we would get from this amendment. So that means the folks that are, you know, kind of just above the threshold of qualifying are... Yes, they're not going to get the benefit of the credit, but they're... Or the amount that they're going to pay in addition because of the redistribution of the tax burden is going to be tiny. It'll be lower than $7.50 over the course of a year. And to me, that... Yeah, I mean, if you're the person that's, you know, at 65,000, it's kind of a bummer. But $7.50 or, you know, $3 over the course of the year is not going to crush you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the conversation that we're having up here. Tonight, I'm not exactly sure if this amendment passes, that I'm comfortable where the dials will be at the end of tonight. But I have said so often that Anarundel County is a generational county. I am the third generation for my family to live here. I know there are members of the council that have generations of their family living here. So in order to keep the conversation going tonight, I am going to support Ms. Rodvian's amendment. And then hopefully, we'll discuss some examples that I'll send over to the administration to flesh out and see what that looks like. And that's all.
Anyone else? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number two has been adopted.
Okay. Bill number 6525, as amended, will be heard on September 15, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6925.
Bill number 6925, In Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts' Conditional Use Workforce Housing.
Get everybody up here. All right. Ms. Pickard, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill is very simple, actually. The workforce housing policy that we adopted, I believe in 2019, allowed for workforce housing with the incentive in certain industrial and commercial zones to access the R-22 density But actually, as well as... As well as some other incentives, such as reduction in capital connection fees, minimum parking requirements, things like that, to make workforce housing work. But we fail to think that a LIHTC, a low-income housing tax credit project, would actually find a parcel that is R-22 already and really only need the other workforce housing incentives. And so that's what this bill does. It just adds R-22 to the workforce housing zoning districts and would allow an R-22... A project in R-22 for workforce housing to capitalize on the other incentives of... They don't need the density, but they need the other aspects of workforce housing. Pretty basic.
All right. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. We support this bill, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion?
I would just add that this is... Was already planned, planning to be part of the Article 18 amendments. So we're just taking it a little earlier to make sure a project that already has won the competitive LIHTC credits can move forward. Thank you. Please support the bill.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 6925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Dr. Linda Hanafin Bonner and Kyle Nimhard. I don't think Mr. Nimhard is here anymore. Yeah. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak on bill number 6925, you may come up at this time as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad you're not disappointed that somebody's going to testify on this bill this evening.
No, no.
Linda Bonner with Anarundel Connecting Together Attainable Housing Team. We're here to voice our support for this bill, and particularly to enable changes to occur for existing zoning, to allow for attainable housing to occur, affordable housing. We're also aware that later this month, we'll have a hearing on a bill that will oppose the density in workforce housing, so we will be here to oppose it. I also want to bring your attention about a report coming out of the Comptroller's Office that identifies why residents are leaving the state of Maryland. It's primarily because of the cost of housing and where they're migrating to. And, you know, this flight impacts... I know I'm preaching to the choir, but this flight impacts our tax revenue. If we don't have the density to support our housing, we're not going to be able to provide tax relief for the residents who need that. So we've got to balance this some way or another. Again, ACT supports, let's get affordable housing accomplished here in the county. We're not doing it right now. We've got lots of policies in place, but not much is happening. So we're pushing to find out why the developers aren't making changes in their building models to get this accomplished. We think workforce housing policies are sound, and we need to implement them. And I can say that because I live off of Reva Road, and I understand that you can live equitably in that type of... Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner. The public hearing on bill number 6925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6925.
Bill number 6925, In Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts' Conditional Use Workforce Housing.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I do want to say I want to thank Dr. Bonner for coming and speaking on both of these, and how, as Ms. Pickard said earlier, all of housing is... We have to pull all the levers. We have to do everything. And I wish that all the people that were here for the previous bill had stayed for this one, because it is just as important when it comes to housing and affordable housing for our seniors and people at all income levels. And so it's important that people look at everything that we're doing and not just one single bill. So, Dr. Bonner, I appreciate you coming out for both, because they're both... They're both very important for addressing our housing needs in the county. So is there anyone else? Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill numbered 6925.
I don't need to do that anymore.
Oh, we don't?
No. We can just go right to vote.
Okay, well, then let's go to the vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 6925.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 6925 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7325.
Bill number 7325, In Ordinance Concerning Zoning Special Exception Use Pile Driving in Marine Construction Operations.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start off, get a little background on this bill, how it came to be. We did not have the opportunity to work session this bill, so some of this will be new for my colleagues. This bill originates from an issue that is occurring in my district, where there is a marina that has been permitting contractors who do marine construction to use the marina as a location for staging. What that means is, some of you may be familiar with this, who have waterfront in your district, others may have seen it. But when you have new piers, new bulkheads, those materials have to typically be loaded onto a barge. There are also excavators that are often put on there, other heavy machinery. People smarter than me can talk about what exactly that looks like. But all of that is loaded onto a barge. It's then taken to the site. Typically, that's to a property owner's residence, where then the work is conducted. The purpose of this bill is to allow for the loading, that staging area, if you will, of these marine construction operations. So the way that this bill is written, there are a couple of things to note with it, right? First is, this is permitting this as a special exception use. So as you all will recognize from Article 18, Section 16, Subsection 304, there are requirements for special exceptions, and that requires a hearing before the Administrative Hearing Officer, where the Hearing Officer must make affirmative findings on the following things. Use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Location, nature, height of each building, wall, fence, nature and extent of landscaping, location, size of intensity, the use of the roads, that they're compatible with appropriate orderly development in the district. Operations related to the use will be no more objectionable with regard to noise, fumes, vibration, or lights nearby properties than other... Then operations in other uses allowed in the article. Use of the location proposed will not have any adverse effects above and beyond those inherently associated with the use, irrespective of its location. Proposed use won't conflict with existing or programmed public facility, public service, school, road. Proposed use has the written recommendation and comment from Health Department and the Office of Planning and Zoning. Proposed use is consistent with County General Development Plan. Applicants presented sufficient evidence of public need for the use. Applicants prevented sufficient evidence the use will need and be able to maintain adherence to the criteria for the specific use. The application will conform to the critical area, criteria for sites located in the critical area. And the administrative site plan demonstrates the applicant's ability to comply with the requirement to the landscape manual. All of that's what you have to meet for every special exception. So we start there. Those 11 criteria have to be met. Then you take a look at this particular bill. You will see that there are additional conditions that are being added in Section 18-11-142. Those include that the site shall be an accessory used to a marina and limited to the lesser of 15% of the total site area or a quarter of an acre. The total lot size for the facility shall be at least half an acre. Facility may operate only between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Monday through Friday. Facility shall be screened from adjacent properties in a manner consistent with the requirements of the County Landscape Manual. Those are all the additional requirements for this use. Then you get into additional conditions that can be imposed if the Hearing Officer found it were appropriate. This is in Section 1816-306 where it talks about decision on application, and Ms. Kenny can certainly back me up and Ms. Miller as well, but the Hearing Officer is permitted to, as it says, quote, "may impose additional restrictions, conditions, or limitations on an application other than an application to change a zoning district as may be considered appropriate to preserve, improve, or protect the general character and design of the land or improvements or of the surrounding or adjacent land and improvements." That's a lot.
That was a lot.
That's a lot. Right? So when we are looking at this bill and we are looking at what is going to be required if this passes, this is not going to spawn a proliferation of these in every MA2-zoned district around the county. These are a lot of hurdles that have to be jumped over. The reason for the hurdles is this. I had an opportunity to talk with the landowner, with a number of the marine contractors who are using the site, with people who rely on this site for their livelihood. I need to try to find a way to help them. I had an opportunity to go meet with the community. The community has their own concerns that they've raised. I was in a room full of 100 people, all of whom were very unhappy about this potentially being rezoned or, you know, allowed to be used in a particular way. To me, the balance was this. You come in, you say it's a special exception, you give the opportunity for the community to have their say in front of the Administrative Hearing Officer. The Administrative Hearing Officer then has the ability to follow the code and then further add additional conditions if necessary to allow the use to move forward. I will just point out, and I appreciate Ms. Miller who highlighted this for me, thank you, in the rewrite of Article 18, Office of Planning and Zoning is already looking to add a definition, because you will note there's not a definition in this bill right now. It's in the proposed list of amendments that are out right now for public review as of August 2025, and that definition would read as follows. "Pile driving in marine construction operations means the use of land or waterfront property for storing and staging equipment, vessels, materials, and vehicles in support of constructing, repairing, or removing piles, bulkheads, piers, docks, or similar marine structures." The reason for that is, as the Office of Planning and Zoning notes, the existing term is not defined. So when we look at what we're doing here, this is a scalpel. This is very narrow. And the purpose of this is to help particular people who are using a particular site, but it's also not fair to say to this community, this is the only site in the whole county, that this can happen. So there has to be a countywide application, but there has to be a narrow path through which the landowner and the businesses using this are going to have an opportunity to use this property while balancing that against the concerns of the community. That is what this bill does. So I am hopeful that we can get there and that my colleagues will support this this evening. Thank you if we can. I will ask that if for any reason any of my colleagues have concerns or feel like we need to talk about this further, then I certainly would entertain a hold because I would much prefer to get this right, but I will be very blunt. I'm not sure how much more right you can get this, right? I'm not sure how many more conditions you can impose on this particular use without making it to the point where it's not feasible at all. And that's not where we want to get either because then we wind up exactly where we are. So with that, should my colleagues have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. I do know that Office of Planning and Zoning has some concerns. I know that the administration is probably going to oppose the bill. And my only suggestion to my colleagues is, when hearing these concerns, think to yourself, then what else should we be doing? Because I've asked those questions and I appreciate Planning and Zoning for providing me some feedback, which they did as we have been drafting this. I've been working on this bill with Miss Beach for the better part of 18 months, roughly. So I just say that because we did not get to this in a haphazard fashion. We did not arrive at this solution in a willy-nilly way. It was deliberate. It was carefully calculated to try to hue that narrow path that allows for all sites to be heard while also giving an avenue forward. Thank you.
Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me I have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. I do want to thank the sponsor. We've had several conversations about this bill as well as some good dialogue with the Office of Planning and Zoning. He is correct, the administration does oppose this because we feel that the MA2 zoning district, it's just ultimately not intended for this type of heavier industrial use and is geared more towards lighter community marinas. And I wish I had an answer of how further we could tailor this, but I have not been able to come up with anything. I can turn it over to Ms. Miller if she has anything she wants to add, but I know the Office of Planning and Zoning's concerns are the same. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Ms. Miller, do you have anything to add?
I don't know that I have a lot to add. We do appreciate that the sponsor incorporated some ideas that the Office of Planning and Zoning had to offer, but in the end, we do feel that we have always considered the MA2 district to be distinctly different from the MB or the MC districts, which we consider to be much more intense. We think that there's a good reason, reason for having that differentiation between the commercial maritime districts that ranges from the light commercial, which is MA2, to the MB and MC, which are the heavier, the heavier uses. Also weighing in is that this property, as you all probably recall, was considered last year during the region plan COP zoning process, and there was an attempt to rezone it to a heavier commercial zone at that time. The administration, the SAC Committee, and the Council ultimately decided that MA2 was the most appropriate zone. So we're also tasting, taking that into consideration that this was just recently vetted. And then lastly, I guess I would add, as, as you all have noted, there's this, recognizing that there are many conditions that have to be met for special exception approval, still, this would not potentially impact one property. There are, at our latest inventory, 53 marinas owned MA2 in the county. There are some on every major river that feeds into the bay, at least four on each river. Some rivers have up to 20 MA2 marinas. So it's a lot of marinas that are in a lot of communities that this level of intensity is probably not appropriate for. So I'll stop there.
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
Briefly, and I want to thank Ms. Miller for that. I don't want to appear to be shooting the messenger because I know that she's up here relaying the message. That said, I just do want to remind my colleagues, she is correct about the rezoning history on this property. Some of you may recall, this property was originally zoned residential, and in the latest iteration of comprehensive rezoning, we did move this from a residential use where it had been for decades used as a marina, but in a non-conforming fashion. We moved it into a conforming fashion, into a maritime use. But I will tell you, the concern I had then is that given the size, the location of the marina, et cetera, it was not an appropriate place to have zoned necessarily as MB. It seemed MA2 was the better use for that. That is why this legislation is now coming approximately a year later to sort of address that issue. I will also just add, I would be surprised, though not shocked, but surprised if a lot of marinas that are MA2 are going to immediately jump into this type of use for their property, particularly if they have existing uses already on the property where they're functioning as a sort of light maritime district. Because in MA2, there are options that are available for restaurants or for different uses of the property that allow for a lot more, frankly, money generation than what is happening with this use. This again is a sort of particular place where this particular activity is occurring, and I don't think that you're going to see a proliferation of this. So I'll just put it that way. This is going to be an onerous process for anyone to go through, particularly in this place. They're going to have a lot of work that they have to go through to do it, so this is merely creating the path.
Okay. All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7325. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received five pieces, which were shared with the Council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Lisa Keter, Joshua Hewitt, Joshua Jacobs, I do not know how to pronounce this one and I don't want to, you know, Arcadius, I think I can say the first name, so. Charles Christ and Chuck Thompson. And I don't want to, as I said, I don't want to misspeak anybody's name, so hopefully to have. And then there are others when they're, we are done with this group. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Joshua Hewitt, from Bayside Beach. I'm here as a homeowner from Bayside Beach and a small business owner. I'm here to show support for the bill that is being introduced by Mr. Volkey and feel that it's necessary to keep marine construction in the area alive and thriving and cost manageable, which in turn keeps our bay beautiful. That's all I have. Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Keter, also with the Bayside Beach community. I'm actually the next-door neighbor to the Geisler Marina, and I'm actually here in full support of passing that, the bill. We've been in a location since March of 2021. I work for the federal government. I work out of my home office most of the time, so I see a lot of the marine work going on there. I have never found that work in and out, the trucks unloading, reloading, ever to be egregious to the point that I would want that to stop within the community. I know it, there's a lot of watermen that move in and out of there, a lot of economic growth around there, and I want to support the marina and also all the folks that live on the water that do need to get their, I guess, piers and everything that they need constructed. They need that location to be able to move in and out of because it's so close to the bay. The other thing I want to point out is, Ms. Geisler, ever since she's been taking over the marina a few years ago, is always very conscientious of what's going on in the neighborhood. And I think that having this type of companies come in and out and limiting the hours and the days of the week is much better than having a full-blown marina where you have foot and car traffic that come in and out all hours of the day and night. And our preference as next-door neighbors is to have it as requested and pass the bill as presented by Volkey. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Keter. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joshua Jacobs. I live at 2005 Cornfield Creek Way in Pasadena, Maryland. I own a marine construction company that works solely in Ann Arundel County. I also own a waterfront property on Bodkin Creek. I am in full support of Bill Number 73-25 for marine construction use. Without Geisler Point Marina, marine contractors will be forced to load much further away, resulting in drastically increased project costs for waterfront homeowners on Bodkin Creek, Stony Creek, and Rock Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Chuck Thompson. I'm a resident of Bayside Beach and also president of the Improvement Association of Bayside Beach. We're, we're for it for different reasons. If this bill moves forward, we request the special exemption use for pile driving and marine construction operations remain as MA2. Bayside Beach has a marina tucked in the corner of the community that was rezoned in 2024 from R-2 with lawful non-conforming uses to MA2. Marine construction operations are not part of the lawful non-conforming uses. Our community was established in 1921 and is not designed or laid out to handle the traffic nor minimize the risk associated with marine construction use at the marina. We therefore believe a case-by-case review in front of the Administrative Hearing Officer will allow all parties to present their case so a fair and reasonable finding can take place. And I attached some additional layouts and pictures just to give you a sense of what the route is, just for your review and verification. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Arcadius maybe isn't here. Charles Christ, okay. Jean Geisler, Joseph Gunther, Mitchell Gunther, and Lenny Anderson.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Jeanie Geisler. My property address is 7831 Southwest Road. I'm the owner of Geisler Point Marina. I'm the owner of a family-owned MA2-zone marina that has served Ann Arundel County for over four decades, and I fully support this bill. The adoption of this bill creates the opportunity for a balanced approach towards environmentally sound land use for small marinas located in unique waterfront settings. For 41 years, my family's marina has been a necessary partner in the execution and completion of county waterway projects. By providing riparian rights to Maryland's extensive shorelines, our goal has always been to serve both residents and commercial watermen. This bill will allow me the opportunity to work conscientiously with other small businesses so that they can continue protecting and restoring Maryland's shorelines. I want to personally thank Councilman Volkey for recognizing the countywide need for additional land use opportunities for marine contractors and for working diligently to find a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Joseph Gunther, 8130 Main Creek Road, and I support Bill Number 7325. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Lenny Anderson of Anderson Marine Construction. This will be my 52nd year in business. I live on the waters of Ann Arundel County. I serve probably 90% residential, maybe 10% commercial. In our industry, we have a lot of hurdles to overcome. Probably number one would be the weather, which none of us can predict on a daily basis. Secondly, is a place to load and unload materials, not necessarily storing them, but in order to serve a client in a reasonable financial way, the closer we can be to where we need to work is going to be less expensive for the client, not necessarily us, because we have to pass the mobilization on. So the more places that we can have available, 90% of the time, my stuff, as you bring it in, you, you don't store it, you put it on your barge and you're gone. And this serves the people that also, I know people live in the communities, they don't like the trucks, but it's not like you're building a house and you have a tractor and trailer or a truck coming in every day. This is usually, in my instance, a one-time shot. You're in and you're out because you can't interfere with a marina's business anyway. And this serves the people that have to protect their waterfront, and if they keep boats in a marina or at their house, they have to maintain their piers, their boat lifts, and it's, you know, we don't want to overcharge, but by the same token, we have to look at how far we have to go. If someone lives in the community that's objecting, you know, they want you to be there when they need you, but they don't want you to be there for someone else. So we're just trying to, you know, work together in our beautiful waterway. We have 4,000 feet of waterway in Maryland.
Thank you.
Ann Arundel County takes up a lot of that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yes, sir.
Mitchell Gunther, 8292 Capell Drive, Pasadena. I am in support of Bill Number 7325. I didn't have anything prepared, but as I'm listening to everybody speak now, I'm a little confused. This bill has to be passed because if you don't give the watermen the access to get to the water, nothing gets fixed. Your neighborhood then starts to deteriorate. Yeah, I get it. People don't want noisy trucks through their neighborhood and so forth and so forth, but what's next? Do we take away the school buses to pick, that pick up our children? Do we take away the trash trucks to pick up our garbage every day? We need to put things and look at the big picture, and I'm just here to support Bill Number 7325. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to Bill Number 7325? Okay. All right. You come on up.
Yeah, I would just like to say I'm in support of the bill.
Sorry. Name and address, please.
Stephen Victor, 8126 Main Creek Road. So I live directly across the street, or across the creek, I should say, from the marina. I've been there probably eight, nine years now, and it's my understanding they've used it for the same use for several years now. But yeah, I'm in support because protecting all the waterways, of course, support a small business. And then I did hear a couple of comments, obviously sitting there as well, about how many there are, how many loading points there are. So if there's, you know, four on each creek, then I don't see the harm in maybe one more. You know, it's just another access point. Listening to some of the contractors talk about the weather and other obstacles they face, I feel like it'll just help, help everyone out.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Steve Bates. I live at 3136 Harness Creek Bird in Annapolis, Maryland. I am a marine contractor. I've been at this for 27 years. I started this company, and I want to pass it down to my children to continue this, what we do. And if we lose this location, we're going to have farther and fewer locations to go to, and then with more tow time, barges tow very slowly. We are weather-dependent. If it's windy or what have you, it's just another day we just don't work. So we do go into the marina at Geisler's, pick up our materials, and then we're out within probably a couple hours, if that. We don't camp out there, we don't store materials there, and I'm for this bill.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 7325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7325. Y'all can go back.
Bill Number 7325. In ordinance concerning zoning, special exception use, pile driving, and marine construction operations.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Rodvian, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to the folks that testified tonight, it's so refreshing to hear neighbors come in support of something a little different in their neighborhood. It's so frequent that, you know, you've maybe heard the acronym NIMBY, and we hear it a lot. I mean, we hear "not in my backyard" a lot, and it's refreshing to hear folks that understand that, you know, this is how small businesses are going to keep afloat. So, you know, making a little, a little tiny pathway in a, you know, just to allow something that is going to help the community be what it is, is really refreshing. So I'm in support of this bill.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, when I came in today, I was not necessarily, I'm a fan of consistency, and I think the county is, tries its best to be coherent in how they interpret the law and areas throughout the county, so they are consistent in how they apply things. But government can also be complicated at times, and we can create barriers for success for citizens and businesses. And, you know, after, not just listening to the testimony, these are just, if it was a special exception, I probably would be a hard no, to be honest with you. But I think, I think at least opening the door to say, does this site make sense for a small business who is obviously in the community and doing well in that community, is a good thing. And so I am certainly going to, I'm going to be in support of the bill to open up that door so that they can at least move forward and say, hey, here's the situation. If this makes sense, great, because the other locations in the county, if they don't make sense, the administration could still shut the door on it. And all this does is open that door. So I'm going to be in support of the bill. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7325.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 7325 has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 2325.
I apologize for the length, so bear with me. Resolution Number 2325. Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member. Whereas the County Council of Anne-Rhonde County established a Severn River Commission in Resolution Number 13084 and reestablished the commission in Resolution Number 4789. And whereas Resolution Number 4789 provides that, subject to confirmation by the County Council, the County Executive shall appoint seven voting members to the Severn River Commission, at least five of whom are residents of the Severn River watershed. And whereas Resolution Number 4789 further provides that each member of the Severn River Commission shall serve a term of three years from the date of the appointment. And whereas there is a vacant sand in the Severn River Commission. And whereas the County Executive has appointed Robert J. Vonsall, a resident of the Severn River watershed, for a term beginning September 15, 2025, and ending on September 14, 2028. And whereas the County Council finds that Robert J. Vonsall meets the eligibility requirements under Resolution Number 4789 and is qualified to serve on the Severn River Commission. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Anne-Rhonde County, Maryland, that it confirms the appointment of Robert J. Vonsall, a resident of the Severn River watershed, to serve on the Severn River Commission for a term beginning September 15, 2025, and ending on September 14, 2028. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to County Executive Stuart Pittman and Kurt Regal, Chair of the Severn River Commission.
Phew. All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. This resolution appoints Robert Vonsall to the Severn River Commission. Copy of his resume has been provided to the Council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I get to serve on the Severn River Commission, and we are very excited. We've been eagerly awaiting his appointment. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Madam Secretary, please read that again. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2325.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2325 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 2425.
Resolution Number 2425. Resolution nominating a member to serve on the Anne-Rhonde County Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission. Whereas Section 36101 of boards, commissions, and similar boards established a Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission, which is also known as the Commission. And whereas Section 36102 provides that the duties of the Commission are, in general, to develop and administer the public grant application process for interested parties to apply for grant funding from the Community Reinvestment and Repair Special Revenue Fund. And whereas Section 36103A2 provides that citizen members are to be nominated to the Commission by the Anne-Rhonde County Council. And whereas the County Council nominates Jacetta Jacobs, an Anne-Rhonde County citizen, excuse me, an Anne-Rhonde County citizen, is qualified to serve on the Commission. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Anne-Rhonde County, Maryland, that it hereby approves the nomination of Jacetta Jacobs to serve as a member of the Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to Stuart Pittman, County Executive, and Jacetta Jacobs nominee.
That one wasn't quite as, quite as much. So, yes, the, for the public information, the Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission is the commission that supports the grants that we receive from this, the legalization of cannabis in the county. And certain areas of the county are designated as areas that were more impacted by drug interventions or drug arrests in the past. And so Ms. Jacobs is a longtime resident of the Laurel area. She's a small business owner, heavily involved in the community, former PTSA President of Mead High School, and knows the needs of the community well. And I think she will be an excellent representative on the commission. So I ask for my colleagues' votes on this. So is there any other discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2425.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2425 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6625.
Bill Number 6625. In ordinance concerning zoning, eating disorder treatment facility.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your bill.
Thank you. So this is really just a matter of clarifying some language to make sure that our code matches the name of a license under state law. So that's really all it is. There's not a new use, not, this is already a special exception, so it's not changing anything except the language and the definition. And it will, that, as a result, we will hopefully be able to get an eating disorder treatment facility in Anne-Rhonde County.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary, can you please add me as a co-sponsor?
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Okay. Administration, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. We support this bill. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Yeah. Ms. Rodvian, I'm going to support the bill. I'm curious, what's the background? Has there been a problem where somebody has applied and they've been told that our code didn't match up? I was just curious if there's some interesting story here.
I think there is, and I'm, it may be coming, that detail may be coming in public testimony? Yes. Getting it on. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary, could I please be added as a co-sponsor as well?
Yes, Ms. Ledbetter.
All right. Administration, anything else? Nope. Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6625. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6625? So please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Ms. Bray?
Thank you, Ms. Hummer, and thank you to a member of the Council, Kinley Bray, YVS Law, 185 Admiral Cochran Drive, Annapolis. I can give a little bit of the background Mr. Volkey asked for. So there was a special exception approved in 2017, extended in 2019, extended in 2023 for an eating disorder treatment facility at 899 Cecil Avenue in Millersville. And the developer and owner of that property has been working with operators to try to find someone to essentially be the day-to-day operation for that facility. And there, many people that he's spoken to have been confused by the designation of Eating Disorder Treatment Facility because there is not a concomitant license in state law for eating disorders specifically. That is under a umbrella of mental health licensing pursuant to the COMAR section. And so we are grateful that Ms. Rodvian was willing to add to the definition, the specific COMAR section. Pursuant to that section, an individual is eligible for what is called a limited private inpatient facility license. That services may be offered to individuals if they require 24-hour inpatient mental health evaluation and treatment, but does not require acute or long-term psychiatric hospital services, has stated a willingness to comply with program rules. And it specifically says an individual is not eligible for limited private inpatient facility services if the individual has a sole diagnosis of substance abuse, intellectual disability, or dementia, is in need of immediate involuntary inpatient psychiatric admission, or is medically unstable. So this license is a general mental health license. Eating disorder treatment falls under that. Simple as that.
Okay. Sound good? All right. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 6625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6625.
Bill Number 6625. In ordinance concerning zoning, eating disorder treatment facility.
Okay. No further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6625.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6625 has passed.
Okay. Is there any other business any Councilmember would like to bring before the County Council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The County Council is adjourned to the public until Tuesday, September 9, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. for a council work session here in the chambers. There we go.